Of council meetings are available upon request. After the council meeting, for real-time transcription, visit your Apple App or Google Play Store and download services such as Live Transcribe or Live Caption. The public is encouraged to join the meeting either online or by phone at the numbers printed on the agenda, which can be found on the city's website at www.diamondbarca.gov, or in person at the main auditorium in South Coast Air Quality Management District. We have also allowed public comments to be submitted in advance to the city clerk. If any were received, they will be noted for the record when we get to the public comment period. This meeting is being recorded, and by participating, you are given permission to be televised. This meeting will be broadcast every Saturday and Sunday at 9:00 a.m., and alternate Tuesdays at 8:00 p.m., and archived for viewing on the city's website, www.diamondbarca.gov. At this point, we'll go and stand for the Pledge of Legions, and then please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Guy Fox of Landmark Church. And Councilmember Lowe will lead us in the pledge.
Thank you for joining us. Please rise, face the flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Fox?
Please join me in prayer. Father, we want to begin by just saying thank you. We thank you because you are so good, and you've blessed us in so many ways. We thank you for our beautiful city with so many amazing people. Or we thank you for our country. Or we thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy. And we thank you for the leaders that have gone before us to lay the foundation for those freedoms. And Father, we thank you for the men and women who have fought to defend those freedoms. And Lord, tonight, we thank you for these council members who are here to employ those freedoms in our community. And, well, we pray you bless them for their service. I pray that God and ask that you would bless their families and just bless the work of their hands. And, Lord, we pray that you would continue to always help them serve with integrity, with honesty, and we pray you give them wisdom, wisdom for our, the best, the best interests of, of our community and its, and its members. Lord, we pray that you'd give them wisdom in the decisions that they will make tonight. And we pray that everything would honor and please you. We love you. We thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. City Clerk Santana, can you please take the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Lowe, here. Councilmember Tang?
Here.
Councilmember Tai?
Here.
Mayor Protem Lu is absent. Mayor Chow?
I'm here. Thank you. City Manager Fox, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you, and the agenda is hereby approved. We're going to go and move on to a special presentation, certificates, and proclamation, which we don't, I mean, we have a few proclamations, but we'll invite those individuals to come up during public comments. Now we'll move on to city manager reports and recommendations.
There are no additional reports this evening.
Thank you, and now move on to public comments. Public comments is the time reserved on each regular meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the council on consent calendar items or other matters of interest not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Although the council does value comments pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the city council or staff may only briefly respond to public comments if necessary, but no extended discussion and no action on such matters may take place. There is a five-minute maximum time limit when addressing the city council. At this time, I'll call up speakers who have submitted a speaker card first, and then City Clerk Santana will then call on those callers who are joining by teleconference who may wish to speak under public comments. So I have three speaker cards. If those of you who are here who wish to speak, please go and submit the speaker card to City Clerk. Let's start with, if we can have Cynthia Yu.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and members of audience. My name is Cynthia Yu from Diamond Bar Library. I'm excited to announce that our new summer discovery program, which encourages participants of all ages to celebrate reading and exploration, will take place from June 1st to August 13th. Customers will be able to participate in the program online or by picking up the game card at Diamond Bar Library. Participants will be challenged to read three books and complete three activities or read three additional books. Youth participants who complete the game will earn a book and prize and be entered into an opportunity, opportunity drawing. At the end of the summer, adults who complete the program will be entered into opportunity drawing for Kindle and other prizes. Our winning and bestselling author and illustrator, Dan Santet, will help us kick off, kick off our summer discovery program. Join us on Saturdays, June 3rd, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. As Dan shares stories of his books, work, process, process, and life along with the secrets of how he has published more than 100 books for young people. We'll give away Dan's books, and Dan will answer questions and sign books for the participating kids. This program is recommended for school-aged kids and their families. For future attention and additional information, please visit our website, lacountylibrary.gov. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Mr. Jason Moss. If you could come up and identify yourself, and I believe you're speaking regarding 5.5 resolution denouncing antisemitism. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to all of you. My name is Jason Moss, and I'm the Executive Director of the Jewish Federation of the Greater San Gabriel and Pomona Valleys. My organization represents the Jewish community from Glendale to Wrench Cucamonga and south to Whittier. And it is within this role that I'm speaking with you tonight. Before I begin, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak about this important issue that is plaguing society. Considered the oldest form of hatred, antisemitism is often referred to as the bellwether of hatred, the canary in the coal mine. As antisemitism rises, as it has over the last several years, other forms of hatred which we've seen are not far behind. You see, for a long time, the Jewish community has felt isolated as we've been confronted with this unprecedented rise of antisemitism, the antisemitic incidents and attacks that we've witnessed and experienced over the last several years. There's been an almost 300% increase since 2016, when there were 1,267 reported hate incidents, including harassment, vandalism, and attacks, to in 2022, there being 3,697 reported incidents. Just last week, the ADL released its Hate in the Golden State and reported that between 2021 and 2022, there was a 41% increase here in California. Judaism teaches that part of the Jewish community's responsibility is to help those in need. And while we've continually stood side by side with other targeted ethnic groups when they have been confronted by hatred or unfair treatment, we have often had to face this hatred towards us alone. But thankfully, that is beginning to change. Last August, CNN's Dana Bash hosted a special report that looked at the rise of antisemitism in the United States and its impact on the Jewish community. And more recently, in March, a new public campaign combating antisemitism was launched called #StandUpToJewishHate, which features a blue square. The campaign highlights that while the percentage of Jews who live in the United States is just 2.4%, Jews are the target of, of over 55% of all hate crimes in America. We are hopeful that these mainstream efforts continue to increase awareness of the hatred Jews are facing in society every day. The City of Diamond Bar can do its part tonight by standing with the Jewish community, by publicly denouncing antisemitism and all forms of hatred, and showing that these incidents taking place across the country do not reflect the values and the ideals of the City of Diamond Bar and its citizens. As city leaders, you can stand up tonight and use your voice to say that you are not okay with the climate of hatred in the United States today and are committing the City of Diamond Bar to do something about it. While passing a resolution may feel symbolic, I want to assure you that it carries significant weight, especially for those impacted by this rise of hatred. It shows that the City of Diamond Bar stands with those targeted, and you are not okay with how they've been treated. You will also join your colleagues in other cities across the Greater San Gabriel and Pomona Valleys who have asked, who we've asked to take similar action. If you approve this resolution, you'll join the cities of Clermont, Upland, Monrovia, Alhambra, Sierra Madre, Temple City, San Gabriel, and Pasadena, with South Pasadena and Walnut coming in the next couple of weeks, hopefully. We hope many other cities over the next couple of months will join this effort. Now, I think we can agree that since you cannot legislate away antisemitism, racism, or other forms of hatred, additional steps must be taken. So what we're asking you and your fellow city council members in the 48 cities throughout the area the Jewish Federation of the Greater San Gabriel and Pomona Valleys covers is to bring together representatives from various ethnic groups within your respective cities to share ideas and work with your city leadership to develop a robust citywide plan to address, combat, and respond to all forms of hatred. Make a statement and a commitment tonight to do what you can to help us eradicate antisemitism and all forms of hatred by taking the first step in passing the resolution before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayin Wang from LA County Department of Mental Health. Please come up. Thank you.
May I have a PowerPoint? Oh, hi. My name is Mayin Wang, and I'm very happy for, for your invitation to this meeting. And I'm going to, on behalf of the Los Angeles County Department of Mental Health, to introduce our United Mental Health promoters. Next slide. Oh, yeah. Yeah, our program is to reduce stigma associated with mental illness among underserved community in Los Angeles County by increasing awareness about mental health issues, removing barriers, and improving timely access to culturally and linguistically appropriate resources. The service we provide are outreach and engagement, educational workshop on 15 mental health topics, and linkage. Yeah, and then who are the mental health promoter? Actually, all the mental health promoter, we are the bilinguals. So we, now, and we, we also have the African-American, Native American, Latino, Latino-American, Korean, Korean-American, and then also including me, Chinese-American. The workshop topics include emotional well-being and stress, bullying prevention, mental health and the stigma, understanding depression and anxiety, grief and loss, understanding the impact of addiction, and the family violence prevention, child abuse prevention, suicide prevention, and also understanding neurodevelopmental disorder and the role of the caregiver and the child behavior and the disorder. And then the last one will be the immigration and adoption. Those workshops are free, educational, and available in multi-language, like what they say, English, Spanish, Korean, Mandarin, Chinese, even though in the other, we confront service area three, in another service area, in another service, service area, they also have Cambodian catalog, Armenian, and then Middle, Middle is European. So, and then the workshop will decide to be facilitated about that one hour to 19, 19 minutes, and then we can be offered in person or virtually. The minimum number will be that five participant. If you want to, like, you want to to coordinate a workshop, please contact our, our clinical lead, his name is Fadipe Ogunbo, Juanita, or Ambaro, or maybe me. So that will be all, yeah. Did you have any question? So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Those are all the speaker cards I have, so if anyone in the audience still wishes to speak, please submit your speaker card. City Clerk Santana, were there any public comments, email received, or any callers on the phone?
Thank you, Mayor. We did receive one email from Adrienne Cotrell. That email was provided to the city council and placed at the entrance to the meeting for public viewing. At this time, we don't have any callers online.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Tang?
I understand that workers from LA Mental Health Department, they bring some flyers and the promotion materials, so you can leave it to cities, and so we can distribute it, we can share your flyers, okay?
And I want to know how many languages you are speaking for, like English, Chinese, Spanish, Korean, or how many languages you want? All, all the four languages.
All of them.
Yeah, all of them, okay. We have many different ethnic groups here.
And may I also bring our 24-hour access line? LA County Department of Health provides a health line for 24 hours. I also include that information, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you so much. So seeing none, we're going to go and close public comments at this point. Let's move on to item number four, schedule future events and consent calendar. Mr. Fox?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. On the schedule of events, you have a, we will be holding a free catalytic converter etching event tomorrow morning from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., located at Calvary Chapel parking lot on Golden Springs. Coffee with the Cop will be held on Tuesday evening, May 23rd, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at Starbucks Inside Target at the corner of Grand and Golden Springs. The Planning Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, May 23rd, starting at 6:30 p.m. in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. The Parks and Recreation Commission will be meeting on Thursday, May 25th, at 6:30 p.m. in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. City offices will be closed on Monday, May 29th, in observance of the Memorial Day holiday. And our next city council meeting will be held Tuesday, June 6th, here in the AQMD Auditorium, starting at 6:30. Moving on to the consent calendar, this evening, you have approval of the minutes from May 2nd, the city council study session and regular meeting, a ratification of the check register dated April 26th through May 9th, proclamation declaring May as Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, a proclamation declaring May as Mental Health Awareness Month, adoption of Resolution 2023-11, denouncing all forms of antisemitism, declaring the 2002 Chevrolet S10 pickup truck as surplus and authorizing transfer to the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, adoption of Resolution 2023-13, approving the plans and specifications for the groundwater drainage improvement project, Phases Four and Five, and a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and approval of a notice of completion for the Diamond Bar Center Slope Stabilization Project. And that concludes the consent calendar for this evening.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Fox. Would any of my council colleagues like to pull any items for discussion? If not, will someone make a motion for approval?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lowe, and a second by Councilmember Tai. City Clerk Santana, please take the roll.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Tang?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lu is absent. Mayor Chow?
Yes, thank you. The consent calendar is hereby approved, 5-0, including the resolution for antisemitism. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number six, public hearings, which we have none. We're going to move on to council, number seven, council considerations. We have none. And that brings us to item number eight, council subcommittee meeting reports and attendance reports. I'll start on my right, Councilmember Lowe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This last couple of weeks, I was honored to represent our city at the SCAG conference. SCAG stands for Southern California Association of Government. And what that organization does is that they focus on issues that affect our local Southern California, such as transportation and lots of it, air quality, utilities, water, and regional waste. Believe it or not, regional waste is a thing, and it's really important. So it was really good to be part of that conference and to learn and see what are the plans for the future, to take care of these issues that make our quality of life better. I also attended a very interesting event. It was the Mother's Day Celebration presented by, by a nonprofit called Heart of Hope. And what they do is they're very interesting. They seek to bring education resources and friendships to individuals who are special needs, and these are students who are special needs. And what they do is they pair the special needs students with regular friends who are non-special needs, and together they, they become friends, their friendship becomes resourceful, and they become, you know, just more lively, and they come out of their, they overcome some of their disabilities. So it's really a neat program. And, and the, the students, in turn, are guided and they're mentored by the, the teachers that are work there. So it's really kind of a win-win for everyone involved. And in addition, I was really surprised to learn that there's a lot of cultural teachings and, and cultural values. So it's really was a fun time for everyone, and everyone got a happy Mother's Day. I also attended as part of the committee of the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, the capital project, reviewing the work on the Fullerton Road grade separation. And that's where we have work to make railroad crossings safer for everyone. So that's an exciting process. But I'm most excited to report to you about the LA County Library's 43rd Annual Bookmark Contest. Every, every time we have a city council meeting, our lovely community librarian talks about what events are happening at the library, and we're really grateful that she does, because in fact, the library really is a community center in its own way. Well, most recently, the library had its 43rd Annual Bookmark Contest. And this bookmark contest is open to K through 12th graders, and believe it or not, over 10,000 original artwork were submitted. Do we have a photo of all? There, there we go. These are just a sample of some of the artwork that was submitted for the bookmarks. 20 winners were selected among the 10,000 entries. And can I have the next slide, please? Our very own, Diamond Bar's very own fifth grader, Vera Kwan, was the winner of the first district bookmark in the level, in the category of grades 3 to 5. Vera is a fifth grader. She attends Evergreen, and, and this is her winning art. It's just absolutely beautiful. So congratulations to Vera. She's a regular at our Diamond Bar Library. She loves reading because she says it broadens her imagination, and she loves drawing because it gives her a chance to put her imagined creations onto paper. And not surprisingly, when she grows up, she wants to be a doctor, or a scientist, or even an astronaut. Maybe that's part of the dreaming. So congratulations to our very own fifth grader, Vera Kwan. And finally, I would just like to pay tribute to our friend and, and community member, Mrs. Terry Geile Muse. This is a picture of Terry. She passed away on April 27th after a very long and ferocious fight with cancer. We all know Terry from her work in our community as the representative for waste management. And as you know, waste management is our waste holler. And Terry has always been so patient and so kind, and answering every question, fixing every problems, and providing services that we all need. What you may not know about Terry is that for many years, she was a member of the Baldwin Park City Council, and she was the president of the Chamber of Commerce over in, in Baldwin Park. Terry would always be very supportive of the nonprofits in our community, showed up at all the events, show up at all of our city events, and she personally supported all of our endeavors with her kindness and with her friendship. She leaves behind her husband, her four children, and a large extended family. On a personal note, Terry was my friend. She was always encouraging, always welcoming, and always went the extra mile for all of her friends. So I extend my deepest condolences to Terry and her family for this great loss. And Mayor, I'm going to ask that we adjourn our meeting tonight in Terry's memory. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you, absolutely. If I can add, Councilmember Tang?
Thank you. Good evening. I have attended a meeting named Safety Workshop sponsored by the LA County Supervisor, Hilda Solis's office, on Saturday. The theme of the workshop is against hate crime, so that pretty much echoing what the previous speaker just presented here. We need to work very closely to reduce, to prevent hate crime. And in, from that workshop, I think I got a lot of information, and I'm very pleased to tell everybody there's a lot of resources to educate and to prevent hate crime. And one take-home lesson for me is that I learned that for reporting hate crimes, that that the, the hate crime victims and the people who report it, and the witness, well, their identity will be kept confidential throughout the whole process. So that will pretty much give a comfort to people who had suffered from hate crime. I know that in our Asian community, many Asians are very shy and very afraid to come out to do the accusation and then do the reporting. And I think that with that knowledge in mind, that people will feel comfortable if they ever experience a hate crime or any harassment, they can all come out to report to the resources. And also, there's a, there's a workshop, it's called the Bystanders Workshop. Basically, they help the people who are bystanding, who happen to witness a hate crime happen to other people, how to get involved, how to get engaged, how to try to minimize the, the situation. So I think that's a very helpful workshop for the so-called bystanders, so that we all can help to prevent, to report hate crime. And lastly, I think there, I learned that there's a hate crime victim compensation program. So in case that anybody suffer from hate crime with the mental, with the physical, with the property damage, and there's another resources that can help to compensate them if all the criteria are met. So I'll be, I'm very happy to report to my city these kind of resources, and hopefully that we can all work together to, to reduce, to prevent any hate crime. We cannot tolerate this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tai?
Thank you, Mayor. I realize that as I get older, I get a little more prickly, a little more cranky, and I just wonder, to quote Ryan McClain, how did we get here? How did we get to a place in the San Gabriel Valley, Los Angeles County, California, the United States of America, where we need a resolution denouncing antisemitism? It's, it's remarkable that that's even on our list of things to do. How, how do we get to a position where we have a, a group that their, their goal is to stop Asian hate? Seriously? We need that? How is it that we have to worry about kids every day going to school, being bullied, coming home, and, and thinking of harming themselves? How did we get here? I don't know. But I will tell you this, Mr. Moss, I will stand with you if I ever see anything like that happen. I will stand with our friends in the Asian community if I ever see anybody challenging them. It, it just, it, you can tell, this is a rare moment for people watching this, that I'm at a loss for words, that we, it's, it's, wasn't it, wasn't it how many years ago that First Lady Reagan said, "Just say no"? Well, how about this? Just stop it. No more of this stuff. Let's just stop it. It just, thank you. I'm glad to be able to get that off my chest, Mayor. I would urge people, please, 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 take advantage of the sheriff's free, again, free, you're not going to pay anything, it's just going to take you a few minutes of your time. The free catalytic converter etching at Calvary Chapel is just a few hundred yards from here. It's another tool in the effort to stop catalytic converter theft. You'll be glad you did it. If anybody ever tries to take it off, you'll, it'll be numbered, and it'll give the sheriff an opportunity to, to find it if it's going to be found at all. And with that, I would say thank you, Councilwoman Lowe, for, for suggesting that we adjourn in Terry's, Terry Muse's memory. She was a wonderful human being, just, it's unfortunate that you... She was a wonderful human being, just, it's unfortunate that you find this out at somebody's memorial of everything that they were involved in. Six years on the Baldwin City Council, on the Chamber of Commerce, she was on our Diamond Bar Community Foundation as well. And, and I realized when I asked her husband later, how is it that she was involved in so many things? And his response was very simply said, "Because she couldn't say no. She just was willing to help people at any chance that she had." So I would say, keep David and their four children and their extended family in your prayers, and we'll miss Terry Muse. She was a wonderful servant to the City of Diamond Bar for waste management, and for years before that with Kaiser Permanente, so we will miss her. Thank you, good night, God bless you.
Thank you all for your beautiful words about Terry. I too had a pleasure working with her on several items, and she was always very helpful, always went beyond, you know, call of duty. So we'll miss her, and we'll certainly adjourn today's meeting in her memory. Wanted first say that if you haven't had dinner yet, there's a tip-a-cop going on until 8 o'clock at Chili's. So if you wanna walk out here and go to Chili's, there's a deputy there who will serve you dinner, and you tip him, and that money goes to the station to help him with different things. So that's going on until 8 o'clock at Chili's, just down the street. I also want to congratulate all the, all the graduating class, their last year's school, I believe, is next Thursday. So go out, make us proud, and, you know, stake your claim and make history, and make us all this proud. So for that, that's all I have. So tonight, we'll adjourn the meeting in memory of Terry G. Muse, Diamond Bar's community representative with waste management. Time's now 7:09. Thank you, good night.